Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council. For March 24th, the year is just kind of flying by here. We'll start with our land acknowledgement. I think I got it. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people, and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes, as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Farnsworth, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Tonight, we will be having Poetry at the Podium. Poetry at the— come on up, Karen. Poetry at the Podium was originally created in 2019 by Spokane poet laureate Mark Anderson along with Spokane Arts to give local poets and poetry enthusiasts the opportunity to make their voices heard at council meetings in a unique and artful way. This opportunity reminds our community that poetry can play an important part in the civic realm. Tonight, we have Karen Mobley reading her poem, "Spokane." Welcome.
Thank you. Council President, City Council, I will read Spokane from my recent book, Six B Pencils. This poem has been published in Washington 129, which was a book that was created by the state poet laureate Todd Marshall. And it's what I would call a nonfiction poem, but it has a few little twists and turns. It's about things that have happened in Spokane. Do not eat more than two fish a week from the River of Merk. Bill, the faucetier, master of old plumbing parts, crowns with copper pipe. Tormino's glass man makes seductive proposals while the windows are measured. White's boots steal the boots' toes. Miller's is unsurpassed in hardware. Someone here knows how to sing the battle hymn of the republic. Our state is named for George Washington, President of the United States. I don't know if his teeth were really made of wood. May Hutton was a suffragette. Mrs. Brown started theater and all that shameful dancing. Lewis and Clark came by. Thompson explored. Cowley started the first church. In 1893, there was a wheat panic. The Great Spokane Fire burned the town. Mr. Duncan brought lilacs. In Manitowoc Park, there used to be a lion in a cage. At Drumhiller Spring, Spokane Gary taught. There is a meteor hole filled with trash and a norovirus at the homeless shelter. A man digs up hills, ant hills, looking for gold. In Washington, the loss of grasping is worth more than it is in Oklahoma. $118,266 more. It says so on this chart. The French horn player says that naked ladies are okay. Someone remembers what it means to be a tree. There are more than a few dogs named Jake. There is a place called Z Nation near here. The Monroe and Washington Street bridges fell into the river. Our governor was mauled by a bear. There are soldiers buried west of town near a place for those who wander downhill. Water is held in the cleft of the rock. In the old days, things were thrown into the river to wash downstream: sawdust, garbage, chamber pots, and ulful. The Japanese garden was built in 1961. Our children ride around town on metal goats and carousel horses going round and round. If you dig down, you might find the bones of salmon or Chinese in opium dens. If you turn carefully, you will see the cursed ghost of Jimmy Marx or the naked butt of Willie Wiley. Drink in the meth and the bootlegged whiskey. No, not all Indians make totem poles, but the heron stands still through it all. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen, for that. At this point in time, we're going to vote on our board commission appointment to the Spokane Public Library. And that was one appointment, and it was Alexi Castilla, any board commentary? All those in favor of Alexi to the Spokane Public Library Board, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? Welcome, Alexi, to your new service. Thank you. Onto the consent agenda. We have several comments on consent. We'll start with Will Hewlings, Justin Haller, and Jim Leedy, in that order.
Council President, while they're coming down, can we take number 1 and 13 separately?
1 and 13?
Good evening.
Good evening, Will.
My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown. So I oppose OPR 2025-0193, which seeks to pre-purchase approval for 17 vehicles requested by various departments as part of the planned and budgeted acquisition for 2025, with a total expenditure not to exceed 1.8—almost $1.8 million. This pre-purchase approval is supposedly necessary to ensure efficient, effective, and timely vehicle acquisition. So I have never supported the use of electric vehicles for the city of Spokane Fleet. However, as a form of protest against the unjust treatment of one of America's most innovative companies, I am willing to make an exception, but only for Tesla vehicles. So as you guys seen, the Democrats are out destroying dealerships. And obviously, I've got two minutes now. It used to be three minutes. But they're out there destroying the 29th. They're going to be in Liberty Lake crying and acting all crazy. So I suggest, if you guys want to support American companies, support Tesla.
Please, there's no clapping allowed.
And, you know, it's just disgusting. So I hope, you know, you guys pay attention and watch what these crazies do here in our city, because it's very embarrassing. And it's disgusting that they're out there doing this to people, because I live downtown. I see Teslas all over. And I'm just waiting for some little scumbag to carve a swastika. You know how insulting that is? Calling somebody a Nazi.
Thank you, Will, your time is up.
That's what they do.
Justin Haller?
Hi, my name is Justin Haller, District 1. And I have a little take— a little different take on the 17 cars for $1.7 million. That's $100,000 per car. And I don't know if any of you with your generous salaries from a supposed part-time job, says Bob Apple and Mike Fagan, own an electric car, but they're pretty expensive. And I would like to see an electric car if it was a Tesla, but that's all I had to say on that. However, I think electric cars are a little bit far away for being practical. I think a hybrid, for the time being, for the next five to 10 years, is way more practical. And I would encourage you to maybe buy a used one or like-new demo. A lot of my smarter friends either buy cars cash or buy them two to three years off of a lease. I don't know if you're allowed to do that, but buying one off a two- to three-year lease saves you 20% to 30% right off the bat. Again, most of my smarter friends do that. So it's just very frustrating to see that you want to spend that money, but there's no— there's no thought process behind it, or it doesn't seem like you're very good stewards with our money. You bought Teslas before, only to realize that the police can't use them because the police gear interferes with the 17-inch screen that the Tesla comes with inherently. So for police, it doesn't work for them because of the electronic gear that they use. So a hybrid would make more sense, but you guys, you know, don't do that. And you have, what, four different types of electric plugs and four different types of cars? Maybe consolidate, buy less types of cars? And why is it— meter maids, for lack of a better phrase, have a full-blown electric car? Can't they get a bike or a little tricycle or an enclosed golf cart like they had 30 years ago, when I was— 40 years ago, when I was a kid? You know, it's just—it's disgusting, so—
Thank you, Justin.
Stop wasting the money.
Jim?
Good evening, council members. My name is Jim Leedy. I am a Spokane resident. I serve as the Executive Director of Citizen 926, the Police Accountability Administrator for Spokane Community Against Racism, SCAR, a member of the Washington Coalition for Police Accountability and an impacted family member. I urge you to vote no on allocating an additional $100,000 to Keating, Buckland, and McCormick Incorporated, PS. This law firm has repeatedly prolonged litigation, costing Spokane taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. In the Novak lawsuit, KBM dragged the case to the brink of trial, only to settle for millions at the last minute. This pattern cannot continue. The current lawsuit involves the fatherless children of Robert Bradley, whose constitutional rights were violated when Officer Johnson and Walker ambushed him in his driveway at night. I have the video and the investigation records to substantiate this. This case will likely cost the city millions. Approving this additional funding places unnecessary financial burden on Spokane, one we cannot afford. If the council does approve funding, Spokane residents deserve transparency. Have you reviewed an itemized invoice to see exactly where the money is going and why these costs are so high? The citizens of Spokane should have access to this information to ensure their tax dollars are being spent responsibly. I urge you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Quinton Lay. And after Quinton, Derek Azaro.
Good evening, council. My name is Quinton Leedy. In 2017, a close family friend by the name of Craig Johnson was shot and killed in Bonner County. In 2018, the case was deemed justified. No amount of money Bonner County could give us would bring Craig back, and no amount of nonexistent apologies could fill the void he had occupied in the hearts of his friends and family. The course of my life was forever changed by the violence demonstrated upon him, with a deep distrust for the police department following me all the way until now. I should note that both my uncle and my grandmother were in law enforcement, and I do not wish to convey the idea that all police officers are bad. I was raised to see police officers as pillars of virtue, protectors of the innocent, but all of that was near shattered after his death. I'd hoped that Craig's death was an isolated incident, but the more I looked, the more I found. All over the country, those whose jobs it is to protect and serve have compromised the safety and serenity of our nation, especially in our fair city. Robert Bradley was acting within his Second Amendment right the night he was killed, simply unloading his car after a camping trip with his family. Within seconds of arrival, the SPD shot him dead. Craig was not my father, but the impact of his death hit me like a truck. As much of us in the room are adults, it's hard to imagine how much this really affects a child. I know this feeling, because I was only 10 years old when he died. I am now 18, and to this day, I still remember how much I loved going to his house and how I never will again. The suffering his fiancee and children have been put through by the people who are meant to aid the community is something I wouldn't wish upon anyone in this room. Instead of arriving with the intention to help, they arrived with the intention to kill. If the money requested by the SPD is granted, our city will have spent roughly $1,100,000 in an attempt to justify his killing. As a lifelong member of the Spokane community—
Thank you, Quinton, for your time. Derek Azaro?
Derek Azaro, supporting District 1. This is on the report of the mayor. I looked over their checkbook this time. You've got three high-profile providers. One's getting $130,000, another one's getting $53,000, and the third one's getting $14,000. The $14,000 was for SNAP. That sounds like a lot of small amount of money compared to all the rest of them. I also talked to you last time at the town hall meeting about having transparency and starting to investigate or audit some of all your providers. You can't just do one, otherwise it seems like you're prejudiced. So as I spoke last time, I'm asking, you know, to start going through each one of these and providing the information that you asked for. You know, look at their books, look at their receipts, and most of all, look at their tax filings with the U.S. government. That's where you're going to go and dig in deep. What are they actually filing with the IRS? Also, what I don't see on here is something missing, and that's the COPS program. No money in there for them. But they're being put through a lot of scrutiny, which I don't agree with. Also, I did a little homework on some past articles on, you know, different providers. And I can tell you that I found a couple of articles where during negotiation time, a provider was basically spreading false rumors against the other party that was competing for the same position, the same money. So you might want to keep your eyes open on someone coming forward and trying to say that so-and-so is doing this and so-and-so is doing that, regardless of who it is. You know, slander statements or whatever might show up. But not having any money on this list that she's gone through all these checks, like I said. This is only, like we've done before. This is only for a week. $130,000 for one, $53,000 for another. And one of them, every time you ask for any kind of documentation, they turn around and they say they're going to sue the city because you're being unfair to pick on them. So that's why I'm saying, going forward, if you're going to give this kind of money out, the mayor needs to start being fair and equitable and asking each one of the providers, especially probably the smaller ones, because they're, you know—
Thank you, Derek, your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay, council members. So we want number one pulled, number 13 pulled. Was there any others on this consent agenda?
Yeah, I was going to comment on some things, but we can do it.
Let's start with number one. That is the approval of the 17 vehicles.
Council President, can we do five also separate?
We can pull five as well. So 1, 5, and 13. We will start with number one on the 17 vehicles. Any council commentary?
Yeah, I'll speak on this. I think EVs are really cool. I think that they have a lot of advantages over internal combustion engines in a lot of ways. But it really depends on the application, right? I don't think they're necessarily good for police work, because we need reliability over just about anything else there. And so I think we found that the hybrids for that particular application is what's best for them. But when it comes to, you know, folks checking meters and things like that, I've got no problem with the EVs and what they do. We are in a tough spot, obviously, with EVs. The state mandates certain things on us. And, you know, not saying that we wouldn't support EV mandates, but even if we wanted to, we couldn't buck against that because the state is mandating on us. And so I think as a city, we're in a tough spot because we have to transition into that space. And so for a number of departments, I think it makes sense. There are a few that we don't. And actually, I did appreciate the Tesla comment, because I remember just a few years ago, we bought four Teslas for the police department and went badly, and there was a pretty big uproar in that way because it didn't do what it does. Moral of the story is that the vehicles that we buy, our fleet team does a really good job finding us the best bang for our buck, working with, you know, the regulations that we've been given. So I appreciate Rick and his team and all that fleet is doing to make sure that we're applying with all mandates from the state and trying to do it in the best way possible for the taxpayer.
Any council commentary? Councilman Cathcart?
Yeah, just to correct one thing. We actually allocated money to buy four Teslas, but they were so expensive, we only got two.
Oh, fair, fair.
Just to correct the record on that. But I will be voting against this. I do not believe the technology is settled. In fact, we're going through this with STA. I think something else will very much be the future, and I don't want to see us spending a lot of money on something that is going to change in the near term. So I'll be voting no.
I'll just say I'll be supporting this. We have an excellent procurement process of how we purchase vehicles through the fleets. Those requests come down from the departments. We're just not buying cars, we're buying cars. They are needed now, so delaying it only hampers that particular department and the police from doing their duties. So with that, councilor—
I'll say one last thing, because I've heard some things on this, particularly with the MACHEs for the police department. And the MACHEs, I understand why people have the problem with them. We asked our fleet department, like, hey, this seems like a luxury vehicle. Are we getting, you know, the vehicles that we need for that particular application? And what they said to us is that per mile, that was the best choice for the police department. So—and for the record, I'm voting against this, but I just wanted to give some context to what's happening here, so.
All right. All those in favor of consent item number one, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? That passes. Onto number five. The outside special counsel contract with Keating, Buckland, and McCormick. Any council commentary on that? Seeing none?
Nope.
Oh, go ahead, council member.
Well, yeah, I guess just with respect. I mean, there's some things that we have learned in executive session that we can't share. And so if the council wanted to release that information, we could certainly do that. But based on what I know, I absolutely have to vote yes on this.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, just—I guess one thing, when we, you know, do approve these, it's not necessarily a referendum on an opinion on the case. It is part of our kind of pro forma legal insurance coverage, too, to hopefully come to some kind of mediation.
All those in favor, number five, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes?
No.
Abstentions? No abstentions? That passes. Number 13. The no-cost contract extension with Central Square Technologies. Any council commentary on that?
This is the false alarm program?
Yes.
Yeah. I will just say, I have voted against this a couple of times. I had hoped that we would have a revised version, but I understand just there's been some delays in getting that done. But basically, my first couple of years on council, I heard about a number of incidents where people were just unfairly charged, these false alarm fees for real incidents that occurred, scary incidents at their homes. And I've just—it's not something I'm going to support until it does get reformed and revised. And I know it's in the works, but it's just been slow to come forward.
Any other council commentary? All those in favor of number 13, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Abstentions? That passes. Now, Ms. Farnsworth, for the rest of the consent agenda. All—the— Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that were said in here that I think are really important. You know, in the reports, payments, and claims, you know, there is a bit of an itemized list of things that come through. I know Mr. Azaro and some others have been highlighting a few of the things that are coming out. Why are we paying $18,000 for rehab in Utah? And I think those are all really good questions, and I'm thankful that you're doing that. But I think, you know, as we stayed with the contract with the lawyers, I think that the taxpayer should know exactly, you know, what's being paid for. I think those itemized lists should be made available as much as possible. Again, it's not our money, it's your money. And I think the most transparency we can give, particularly with the $1.2 billion budget, I think is really good, especially if, you know, there's nothing to hide. And I'm certainly not implying that there's anything to hide. I just think it's good that if there's nothing to hide, to allow people to come in and see. It builds trust with the community. And so I really like the itemized list of expenditures idea. I don't know what I'm going to do with it yet, but I appreciate that idea, and we'll probably chat more on that. So—and the other thing was, on the providers that are getting money that you brought up, there are council members up here, and I don't want to say anything too early, but I will say that there is, I think, movement for an audit ordinance to come forward, particularly when it comes to our providers. And I don't exactly know what that looks like yet, but I know that there— at least some form of idea will come forward, so.
Any other council commentary? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? The consent agenda is approved. Onto resolutions and final readings, Ms. Fisher? Ms. Farnsworth, my God, I'm on autopilot, forgive me.
No, that's okay. I was turning the page to the right. Resolution 2025-0017, joint resolution of Spokane County in the matter of authorizing the Spokane Airport Board to sell property located on a portion of Spokane County as Sir Tax Parcel Number 15365.1202, consisting of approximately 14.24 acres located immediately west of Tax Parcel 15365.1201, and grant and execute on a right of first refusal on 17.96 acres of adjacent and contiguous property located in the same Spokane County Tax Parcel Number 15365.1202.
Any council commentary? It's the worst to see if you had any. Serving on the airport board, I'm total supporter of this because it's economic development for our region. Please prepare the vote. Thank you.
In the 3:30 meeting today, Councilmember Dillon requests the motion to defer the following item to the April 14, 2025 agenda. It's Resolution 2025-0018. Do you want me to read it through, or is that enough?
We already did that, right? Yeah, okay.
And then ordinance— let's see. Do we want to go onto ordinances?
First reading.
First reading.
All right. Ordinance C36647, recodifying a section relating to animals into the correct chapter, repealing SMC Chapter 10.24 and Section SMC 10.24.060, and adopting new Section 10.74.075 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance C36648, relating to mechanical newspaper dispensers, repealing Section 08.02.0212 and Chapter 10.38 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance 36649, relating to the Purchasing and Contracts Department and Director of Purchasing and Contracts, amending Sections 03.01A.315— and Contracts, amending Sections 03.01A.315, 07.06.020, 07.06.030, 07.06.035, 07.06.097, 07.06.155, 07.06.160, 07.06.170, 07.06.173, 06.06.190, 07.06.200, 07.06.220, 07.06.270, 07.06.290, 07.06.310, and 07.06.330 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance C36650 was deferred to the April 14, 2025 agenda during the March 17, 2025 agenda review session. Ordinance C36651, consolidating the General Business License and Regulatory Business License Codes into a single code section, clarifying licensing requirements under state law, eliminating conflicting and duplicative code and regulatory requirements, repealing SMC Chapter 04.04 and SFC Sections 08.01.025, 08.01.110, 08.01.130, 08.01.200, 08.01.210, 08.01.230, and 08.01.320, adopting a new SMC Section 08.01.321, amending SMC Sections 08.01.020, 08.01.070, 08.01.090, 08.01.120, 08.01.150, 08.01.160, and 08.01.220 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance 36652, correcting municipal code references resulting from the streamlining of general business and regulatory licensing processes and procedures, amending Sections 10.23A.010, 10.23A.020, 10.23A.070, 10.25.010, 10.26.010, 10.26.070, 10.29.010, .010, 10.29.020, 10.29.031, 10.29.060, 10.29.070, 10.39.070, 10.40.010, 10.40.025, 10.41A.010, 10.41A.040, 10.42.030, 10.51.020, 10.51.110, 10.51.130, 10.51.50, 10.52.020, 10.52.030, 10.55.020, and 17C.316.050, repealing Sections 10.23A.075, 10.28.020, and 10.0, excuse me, 10.40.020 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance 36653, relating to the public ways and property, adopting new Sections 12.13, 12.13.10, .010, 12.13.020, 12.13.030, 12.13.040, 12.13.050, 12.13.060, 12.13.210, 12.13.220, 12.13.240, and 12.13.250 to Chapter 12 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Ordinance 36654, relating to utility cost recovery methods, repealing SMC 13.03.0702, 13.3.0704, 13.03.0706, 13.03.0708, 13.03.0710, and 13.03.0712 to Chapter 13.03, amending 0.08.010 and 13.08.020 to Chapter 13.08, and adding new SFC Sections 13.08.200, 13.08.210, 13.08.220, 13.08.230, 13.08.240, 13.08.250, 13.8, 13.08.300, 13.08.310, 13.08.330, 13.08.340, 13.08.350, and 13.08.360 to Chapter 13.08 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Farnsworth.
I almost made a motion to allow the.
I'll refer man the council. We have one public comment on the first reading, that's Justin Holler. Justin?
This is CR, CW, or CPRs, right?
Can you read that back? Rewritten it all back.
You're doing awesome. Because I wanted to talk on the CPR 02, 03, and 13. I don't understand why you guys lump the parks and libraries together, and it seems like phantom money. I'm wondering if you're ever gonna fill in those amounts, or if it's just phantom money that goes into Ether, and we're just, we're not supposed to know the amounts, or where it goes, where it comes from, and, you know, it'd be nice to know where the money that you steal, I mean, tax us, on goes, and why it goes to where it goes. And particularly with the NGOs, it's frustrating to see copious amounts of money being given to known embezzlers.
So, Justin, we are actually taking comment on the first readings. You were up to comment on the consent agenda.
Okay, I'm getting ahead of myself. ODR 36646, can I talk about that?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I get ahead of myself sometimes. Yeah, the height limits, I have mixed feelings on this. I don't want to see a bunch of low-income buildings, solely low-income buildings. Where it has worked is when it is only a 20% amount of a low-income unit in an 80% full freight unit. When you have 100% low-income units, you have Rob McCann's crack dens, which, as we all know and suffer through, Rob McCann's five crack dens downtown have decimated downtown, and they're decimating the West Hills neighborhood, and they decimate every neighborhood that he opens these up. If you limit the amount of high-rise buildings to 20% low-income, in those high-rise buildings, I'm weaving it together.
And thank you, Justin, your time is up.
But 20%, it's the only way it's gonna work.
Ms. Farnsworth, you want to read the H1 on the hearing?
Yes. H1, final reading and hearing on interim zoning ordinance C36646, concerning permitting and encouraging construction projects in downtown Spokane, fixing inconsistencies in height limits between zones, adopting a new Chapter 17C.425 SMC interim height limits, setting a public hearing, and establishing a work program, deferred from March 10, 2025.
This is a time and place set for the public hearing on the following matter, interim zoning ordinance. The hearing is now called to order. I don't believe there's any staff reports in the room, so we'll proceed with speakers. You have up to three minutes. Council rules apply same as on public testimony, and confine your remarks, please, to the hearing item. First up is Rayland Barden, Will Hughings, and Terry Hill.
Good evening, Council President and Councilmembers. Rayland Barden with the Downtown Spokane Partnership. I know that we have submitted our formal written letter of support, but we just want to reiterate how much we appreciate you taking up this change, and I would just like to highlight that these height restrictions would potentially free up development along Spokane Falls Boulevard with much-needed housing. Thanks to the funds the council allocated, we are underway with a downtown housing study, and this could spur additional development with more residents and visitors to enjoy downtown. So again, thank you, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Rayland. Will Hughings, and after Will Hughings, Terry Hill.
Good evening again. My name is Will Hughings, and I live downtown Spokane. Well, I was gonna read this last time, but I didn't. But here is why the interim zoning ordinance for height limits with a supposed goal of revitalizing the downtown area through new development is a bad idea for downtown Spokane, my neighborhood slash precinct. One, loss of historic character. Spokane's downtown is known for its historic buildings, such as the Davenport Hotel, the Steam Plant, and my home, the Rid Path. If height limits were removed, developers might replace or overshadow these landmarks with high-rise buildings that don't fit Spokane's architectural identity. Overburdening, number two, overburdening infrastructure. Spokane's infrastructure, roads, water, supply, sewer systems, and emergency services was not designed for a dense urban core filled with skyscrapers. More high-rises could lead to greater congestion, parking shortages, and strains on city services, especially given Spokane's current financial problems. Shadow, number three, shadowing and reduced livability. Skyscrapers can cast long shadows blocking sunlight from public spaces, parks, and even residential buildings like my building. This could make downtown less inviting and negatively impact businesses that rely on outdoor seating or foot traffic. Number four, increased housing costs. Developers might prioritize luxury high-rises over affordable housing, driving up property values and rent prices. Wind tunnel effects. Tall buildings can create wind tunnels, making streets less comfortable for pedestrians and cyclists, something particularly concerning, given Spokane's cold winters and the city's effort to encourage walkability. Number six, emergency response challenges. My time's running out, but basically, I'm against this, and I've said that before. I don't think it's a, you know, and the other reason why, as I mentioned before, the Chinese Communist Party love building height restrictions, and as a proud Republican, I don't think we need, I don't think we need to be doing that. We need to come up with other ways of housing.
Terry Hill, and then Justin Holler, and then Clayton McFarland.
Terry Hill, Spokane, I speak in favor of this ordinance tonight. I think Spokane is, downtown Spokane is in need of revitalization, and I think, and there's only really one direction to go, and that's up. One property that could definitely be almost shovel-ready and benefit from this project would be the STA Plaza. I'm old enough to remember that that building was originally planned to be a 23-story structure. Construction on that building was halted when a judge, after Steve Yookster lawsuit, stopped, stopped the workage. That lawsuit, strangely, centered around the beams, beams used in that construction. That lawsuit was never resolved, but the STA, but the work stoppage caused the developer to simply walk away from the project. And the STA Board voted to cap the building, top the building off at two stories. The executive director at that time, Mr. Helen Schwein, intentionally made the sidewalks around that building extra wide, in hopes that maybe someday, a developer, another developer would come along, plant beams outside the building, and build up and over. I have no idea if any of that is structurally, financially, or legally doable. I'm kind of a simple guy. But I do know that Spokane would benefit from a high-rise downtown, especially one dedicated to housing, especially affordable housing. And I do know that the current building is two stories high, surrounded by extra-wide sidewalks, and surrounded by extra-wide sidewalks, and another one in there somewhere, oh, with a whole bunch of dead space above it. What I learned this week at the STA Board meeting is that building is also due for a roof overlay, slated cost about $2.5 million. What I'm thinking is, that's a hard bar for me. What I'm thinking is that somewhere there exists blueprints for a 23-story structure. Maybe it's time somebody digs them up and does something with them. And that's all I know, so I'll get out of the way for smart people.
Thank you, Terry. Justin, and then Clayton McFarland.
I'll keep it short, since apparently I got ahead of myself once again. I echo the thoughts of a lot of other people. There are many concerns with high-rise buildings. My biggest concern is the threat, and it is a threat, of low-income buildings built by you-know-who and other people that are involved in nonprofits and NGOs. I caution you and warn you, please do not let Rob McCann have any more money. He is, he is just horrible. He's the worst. You know, he makes over 300,000 from a nonprofit while you guys pay the extortion fee when he shuts, threatens to shut down HOC. I don't want to see more of that extortion money being given to him. You know, I have no problem with the height limits. There's a, there's a three-story building going in on foothills near Perry Street, and obviously, some people who bought property on the other side of that are gonna have a shady winter. But I think on some things, the benefit outweighs the detriment. Just like on Nevada, there's a height variance, where it really only affects one house, a duplex that went up, and that creates food for a builder. That creates money in someone's hand. And I hear some of the council members, prior council members, mind you, but they have said, just build smaller, just build smaller. But you can't build smaller with the copious amounts of fees. If you have, let's say, 20,000 in fees, you can't build a $300,000 house. You have to build a $400,000 house because there's not enough cake money in there. So you can't build a smaller house and just offset that. And so you have to build bigger, you have to build duplexes, quads, up, whatever it is. So I'm pro-builder, but be cautious of who gets the building credits and who gets the tax benefits, because it's a very delicate situation, and you do not want to repeat what prior administrations have done with Condon and Ben Stucker rubber stamping Rob McCann's agenda.
Thank you, Justin. Clayton McFarland, and then Ryan Lewis.
Good evening, and thank you for your time and consideration. The ordinance C36646, the interim zoning ordinance for height limitations. My name's Clayton McFarland. First and foremost, I'm a Spokane citizen, and I reside in District Two. As a staunch supporter of development in Spokane, I'm thankful for Councilmember Bingle, Councilmember Zappone, and Councilmember Klitsky for sponsoring tonight's ordinance. In addition to working as a commercial property manager at Goodell &amp; Barbieri Company, I have the pleasure of serving downtown Spokane business owners on the Ratepayer Advisory Board for the Downtown Business Improvement District, and as Legislative Chair of Boma Spokane. It's from these three positions that I'm here to support the elimination of height limits in downtown Spokane. It's something that developers, commercial property owners, and brokers have been asking for, for nearly a decade. This ordinance doesn't readily solve our housing crisis. This ordinance doesn't readily solve our housing crisis, and it will not cause a project to break ground next week. What it does is allow parcels of land in downtown that have historically been undevelopable into financially possible projects. In order to obtain funding for new construction, banks require specific returns on investment, despite the tenacity and will of a local developer who may be willing to take on that short-term loss. I'm certain many developers, who some can attest, that limiting new construction in downtown core prevents new projects and new high-rises from happening, because there's only so much that you can charge for an apartment or for an office. This is evident, evident, because Spokane has had 42 years since our most recent change in skyline. The last high-rise in Spokane was the Sea First Tower in 1983, which is now the Bank of America Building. As reported in the Inlander, Spokane is projected to keep growing, and it's critical, as we grow, we keep focused on infill and enhancing our downtown. New developments increase tax revenue for the city, provide much-needed product to our housing supply, and create healthy competition in the real estate market. Collectively, if we want to increase our housing supply, think condos and apartments, then this ordinance is a great step in that direction. As stated in letters from our firm to then-council president Stuckert in 2017, and then council president Beggs in 2021, quote, "Development of this portion of downtown will not occur unless the city of Spokane and property owners work together cohesively as a place for business and citizens to prosper." This ordinance helps achieve that. So our real estate community is very excited for the chance to remove a barrier for new construction, and we're thankful that you guys are considering it. And I ask that you vote in favor of this ordinance, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton.
Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here tonight. Ryan Lewis, I live in downtown Spokane and work for a real estate developer in downtown Spokane. This is a great thing for Spokane. We hope we can pass it tonight, everyone that supports it, and it's exciting to be here where I think we all agree, which is great. So it's a good thing for development, it's a good thing for downtown Spokane. We want developers to come to downtown Spokane, and this lifts just one more barrier for them. And my vision, and I think most of the developers' vision for this, is we're going to be able to have several different projects, more opportunities for more projects in downtown Spokane, whether that be low-income, high-rise, more parking, if some people think we need parking. There's a wide variety of things you can do when you build up, and this is going to eliminate that restriction, I hope, and I'm glad everybody hopefully supports that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I'm going to request a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any commentary from council? Councilmember McCattcart?
Yeah, so just a couple of things on this. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Bingle for taking up the mantle of this issue of height limits. I don't think anybody has been as passionate-
Excuse me, council president. Maybe we just dispose of the motion to close the hearing and then proceed to a motion to adopt the ordinance.
All, it's moved to second to close the hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any no's, abstentions, great. Now we'll go on with the motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Now I will take council commentary. Councilmember McCattcart, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll be quick. I don't think I've known anybody who's been as passionate about eliminating height restrictions as Councilmember Bingle has been, and so it's been fun to hear a lot of the commentary from him. And Clayton mentioned, you know, the advocacy in 2021, and for those that don't know the background, that year, there was a big downtown plan that was adopted, and there was a lot of advocacy on my part at that time to try and eliminate a section in there that's still in there today, that essentially mandates that a certain portion of downtown remain with this restricted height limit. And in fact, in July of 2021, when that was adopted, I made a motion to try and strike that, and so what a difference four years makes. It was rejected on a three-to-four vote, and I was joined in support on that by Councilmember Stratton and Councilmember Wilkerson. And so grateful to see what I think will hopefully be a fairly unanimous decision tonight, but we'll see where that goes, because this just makes a lot of common sense. Artificial restrictions just do not do anything but overly inflate costs, make things harder to develop so they don't pencil. You know, housing has been a big topic, and obviously, if you can build up and you can add a lot of housing, that increases supply, and we have a supply crisis. So this is a big, I think, boon for our community, and so, once again, I just want to thank Councilmember Bingle for taking up the mantle on this, but also Councilmembers Zappone and Klitsky for being champions of this as well.
You have the council commenter? Councilmember Dylan?
Save the best for last. Well, I do, you know, it's a funny thing, sometimes people ask, you know, what is it like up on the seventh floor in council office? And I remember almost a year ago to this day, walking towards the elevators, Councilmember Bingle and Councilmember Zappone were chatting with Spencer Gardner, our planning director, and Councilmember Bingle called out to me as I was going, and was just like, hey, downtown height restrictions, like, you up or you down? And I was like, raise the roof! And that was like, kind of, kind of it, and kind of got the, you know, wheel going, and it's really amazing to be here now doing this, and really want to credit Councilmember Bingle, Councilmember Zappone, and Councilmember Klitsky for advocating for this and the administration for making it work. You know, when you look at a map of our downtown, kind of the overlay of our surface parking lots, vacant properties, we have so much potential. This ordinance really does allow more flexibility to meet our housing needs and maximizing land use, and as we love to say, building up, not out. So, nice work.
Councilmember Bingle, then Councilmember Klitsky. Go ahead, Councilmember Bingle.
I'm going to talk a lot. Do you want to? All right. So I, I am really excited about this, and I just, I'm excited that we, when we talk about housing, it is something really exciting to talk about from the dais, because there is such unity in this council on how do we get more housing built for people to be able to afford their rent or afford a home or something like that. It's really exciting to have those discussions here, whereas some of the other conversations we have are a lot more contentious, and, you know, sometimes we get a little animated up here, but on this one, it's really exciting to work in that, in that space. And I do want to thank, you know, the mayor and administration, and Spencer, and everybody for believing in this idea and helping us move it forward. But my, my like, go-to question for people who want to be on the Plan Commission is like, what are your thoughts on height limits, right? And so I'm glad that we're in this space now, because if we're not going to be able to build out, then we have to be able to build up, because we do have a lot of people moving here. And there are particular sections of downtown that would absolutely be transformed by great new buildings in the, in the city of Spokane. And I remember walking around downtown like a year and a half ago, after it had been districted into District 1, thinking through like, my God, the skyline here has not changed in so long. And I hear people when they're saying, you know, it's, you know, some of the buildings downtown are historic, they weren't historic at one point, right? They were brand-new at one point, and they were new, and it's not what, you know, the rest of downtown looked like, and I don't think it's going to detract from downtown. I think it's just going to enhance and make downtown better. But, you know, this idea of what do we have to do to get cranes in the sky, to get downtown built, because I think Spokane's at this, at this interesting moment in history, where it's like, are we going to continue to be this, you know, see ourselves as like a sleepy, sort of poverty-ridden town? Or are we going to embrace the fact that we're a top 100 city in the, in the United States, and step into believing in ourselves as a real city and a powerhouse in the state? Because if we want to attract business, if we want to attract development, we need to demonstrate to the people around the country that like, no, we're absolutely going places. And I think that the places that we're going are up, and I don't think there's a better way to demonstrate that than removing height restrictions. And it wasn't just the restrictions on height, there were other things that were a problem too. And as I, for the last year and a half, as I've been talking to developers, what are the things that are, what are problems, you know, permitting, codes, whatever it is, other things came up, like the tall building standards that we had, that were effectively like a seven-story cap, because once you started getting over seven, then there were like weird, you know, steps and things like that that you had to do. But I do know that there are particular places of downtown where there will be a lot of interest in building up, and building up soon, if market conditions allow, because we are getting things out of the way. I don't think it's going to be a strain on the infrastructure. You know, I've spent the last, you know, two years working on GFCs to make sure that it's a fair amount for developers to pay without it, you know, overburdening development, making sure that our impact fees are proper to not overwhelm the current infrastructure that we have and put that on the backs of our rate payers. I've spent realistically my entire time on council trying to get this done, and I'm excited that we're at this space. I'm really grateful to the council for absolutely helping me raise the roof here, because that was a great, was a great moment. But no, I'm very excited about this. I think it's going to be great. I don't think it's going to take anything away from the park. I think it's going to enhance it. I think you might actually have families wanting to live downtown, or at least having the opportunity to, because there is a great park, there's a great river. I don't think it's going to take away from businesses downtown. I think our retail and our restaurants are going to love the fact that we're working towards getting thousands of people, thousands of people more to be living downtown. And I think the opportunity is there when you look at what the government has done between, you know, parking the people, MFTE, new market tax credits, now removing height limits. I think that there is a time, a time in the near future where we actually are going to see cranes in the sky, and it's going to bring this exciting new level of energy to the city of Spokane, where I think we all start pulling in the right direction. And I think it does also give us an opportunity, considering, sorry, am I rambling? I think it does give us an opportunity as well to really, with 40% of downtown being, you know, surface parking lots or undeveloped, I think it really gives us the opportunity to build a city of the future as well, in the city of Spokane. And that's what I'm really excited about, excited about Spokane being the leader, and how do we develop and develop responsibly and create, create a place that's welcoming for people, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingle. Your time was up. Councilmember, yes, Councilmember Klitsky.
Yes, thanks for that, Councilmember Bingle. I'm glad that you feel like we're going up. That's where we should be going. But I did have just three things. The STA Plaza commentary, that's a fantastic idea for a public-private partnership someday in the future, but I did want to point out that the new roof is not going to cost $2.5 million. It's more like $1.7 million. The rest of that money that was talked about at the STA board meeting was for a generator replacement. We also received some concerns about shading in Peaceful Valley. This change does not take away the shading protections for Peaceful Valley neighborhood, and some folks did comment, continuing with concerns about shade in Riverfront Park. The only time, if we remember that past study that was done, the only time that there's really any significant shading in Riverfront Park from potential towers there is in the wintertime, where we have an ice ribbon. And considering the unpredictable weather we have in wintertime, it's probably a good thing to have shading on that ice ribbon in the wintertime. So I think we've looked into all of the concerns raised by citizens, and we still think that this is an overall win for the city.
Councilmember Bingle.
I forgot to talk about STA. So the STA building is one where it was built to be built much bigger than that. I've talked to a lot of commercial brokers in town, and this would be an STA decision, but if they decided they wanted to move on from that building, that, that building could get redeveloped into something pretty incredible.
You have the council commentary? Councilmembers Zappone?
Yeah, I'll just say thanks to Councilmember Bingle and all the staff that worked on this, and the community who showed up and provided feedback too. I think it'll be an exciting opportunity, and we've been united on using every tool that we can to build more housing, and so this is another example of trying to build more housing.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Yeah, I'm also in favor of this project. I've been waiting for this to happen, you know, coming from the seventh, one of the, or the seventh biggest city in the world, seeing the sky, you know, scrapers and tall buildings. It's, Spokane is growing. I also hope that we do allow low-income opportunities for our constituents, the opportunity to, you know, to get a home, and also meeting the needs of constituents and make this building's handicap accessible in all of their needs. And I'm all excited that we have no earthquakes here, so if you've ever been in a tall building with earthquakes, it's horrible, so.
You have the council commentary? Thank you. I just echo all that's been said. Thank you all. That was amazing. That concludes our legislative agenda for the evening. We will now go into open forum. Again, in open forum, there's no clapping, no cheering, no booing, and no public outbursts. There is a two-minute time limit for comments made during open forum. Please note that council members will not respond to specific questions or engage with individual speakers, but can be available to answer questions or set up conversations after the meeting. And our first up for open forum is Mr. Chakobe.
Good evening, council members. My name is Karen Pooley. I'm here today due to the troubling news about last week's fire in West Spokane. It was a pretty bad fire. Evacuations even happened, and KHQ reports that the fire hydrants were dry. Why is this concerning to me? Well, after the LA devastation and the reports that LA's hydrants were also dry, I sent this council a query worried about Spokane's fire readiness. I received emails from Councilmember Klitsky's office, ensuring me that yes, Spokane is ready. Her office assured me that Spokane Public Works monitors our 7,500 fire hydrants. Her office reported that only 10 hydrants were down for repairs, and that our Spokane Fire Department was fully aware of these hydrants needing repair. Yet, just like in LA, KHQ reports that Spokane's County Fire Department Number 3 was totally unaware of why these hydrants were dry. It's clear that the Spokane County Fire Department had not received any communication about those hydrants, and I believe this is a major screw-up, just like in LA. This type of leadership failure can't be tolerated, especially in Spokane. Being in a fire zone, we need to be 100% ready. That was my comment on that, but I also have been talking to this council about the Cochrane Basin failure, and I listened to the explanation given to the city via video of the engineer claiming that the shut-off valve was not installed, and they had to use sandbakes and plywood to stop the flow of water. But then Marlene Feist emailed me and gave me a totally different explanation than the engineer had presented, and she said that the, even though the heavy construction trucks were gone from Down River, that the installation was still not complete. I was promised an answer to this discrepancy and never received one, and I think that's a pretty big leadership failure too.
Thank you.
By the way, I support the development of downtown, but it needs to be very managed.
Thank you, Karen. Will Quinn? Is he online or in the house?
No Will online.
No Will? We'll go to, is Terry Hill still with, oh, Will, there you are.
Rental, rental business tonight. Will Quinn, a Spokane mom-and-pop landlord. You probably wonder what's with the outfit. It's pretty much what I wear six, seven days out of the week as a mom-and-pop landlord, doing most of the maintenance. I just finished day 13 on a destroyed two-bedroom, one-bath apartment, still looking at 10 to 14 more days to completion, and approximately two and a half years to recover my expenses. Next week, you'll get the backstory and a descriptive narrative of the damages. Now let's discuss exiting the market. Mom-and-pops selling out, leaving. When we moved back to Spokane from Bainbridge Island in 2016, I decided to buy rental properties in lieu of leaving the kids cash. We purchased a single-family home, a duplex, a five-unit, and a seven-unit apartment. A number of individuals have testified that the passing of draconian rental laws, i.e. rent control stabilization, among others, would drive the mom-and-pops out of the market. Mr. Zappone exhibited skepticism and called for metrics to support this supposition. You're gazing upon a metric. Our one- and two-bedrooms are priced $300-plus under market. Keep that in mind. We are selling first and foremost because I refuse to be held hostage by socialistic ideologies and the individuals who promote them. We sold the single-family home in December 2024. It's now a house for people to live in, no more, no longer rental, out of the, out of the thing. Sold the duplex February 2025. Immediately, rent was increased in the one-bedroom by $50. The two-bedroom upstairs moved out, and they raised that by three and a quarter.
Thank you, Will. Your time is up.
Is that it? Oh, God. It's so frustrating, Betsy. Next week, next week.
To be continued. Terry Hill? And after Terry Hill, we'll have Earl Moore.
Can I speak now? Terry Hill, Spokane. Two weeks ago, I attended an event at the Riverpoint Campus along with about 600 members of my community. You know how many police officers we had out there? Two. 600 people, two police officers. Maybe it's because nobody showed up with hangman nooses, zip ties, bear spray or other weapons. Maybe nobody threatened to drag anyone through the streets by their hair. Just American citizens, just community members exercising their one A rights. I spoke with the two officers involved. I saw them at another event about a week later and asked them, were there any, were there any events? Did you have any problems at that event with 600 people? They said no, just a couple of times they had to remind people not to block driveways and to keep the sidewalks clear. I've been to other events in other locations where SPD didn't quite respond or act in that same manner. Of course, we had a different police chief back then. So I'm hoping that I see, I'm sensing that we have a sea change within SPD and I commend those two officers and I have great hopes for a new chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Earl Moore, and after Earl, we will have Justin Holler.
Good evening, City Council. My name's Earl Moore. I live up north. I am concerned about the continuous decline of our beautiful city. We have some of the most elite facilities in the Pacific Northwest. One example of this is our crown jewel known as Riverfront Park. Despite the millions of dollars recently invested into this park, many walking through the park depending on the time of day, experiencing varying degrees of safety. In extreme examples, some people even believe the park is never safe for them. Whether or not that is true, it's important to make everyone feel safe in our city. It is my humble belief that the homeless problem overlaps with my previous statement. If we do not have a safe city, our city will not thrive and it will cease to exist. Safety is number one. Solution: Stop enabling these individuals who live on our streets. Allow the police to do their job. Educate everyone on the dangers of fentanyl. Educate the people on the importance of a jail, one with the capacity to treat those suffering from mental illness. These individuals need specialized care. Where are they getting it now? Not from any of the programs that our city offers. UGM has multiple beds available. Teen and adult challenge has empty beds. These facilities have great outcomes and they allow people to reach their potential and thrive in life. I recently attended a memorial, excuse me, of a young man who had unlimited potential. Some of you were there. You heard what a phenomenal young man Gabriel was. His life was cut short because I, because I believe we as a community failed. We must do better. We must do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Holler, and after Justin, we will have Derek Azaro.
Hi, my name's Justin Holler, District One. Pretty much speech is a big thing for me. And regardless of whether I agree with it or I don't agree with it, I think it's absolute. And I think it's a shame that we're censored here and we can't clap or boo for or against what's going on. And I, I remember when the right was trying to shut down Dee Schneider with Twisted Sister and Ice T was being protested against at, by Time Warner. And I actually saw him being flipped off, or flipping protesters off in his Rolls Royce carnage with red pinstriping. Great scene. It, we have the First Amendment or we don't. And I can use caustic language up here if I want to. I choose not to, but we can use caustic language if, if we, if we want to. And only because my grandpa said that if you, if you use a word too often, it's meaningless, do I not. But I'm very frustrated about what's going on in this city. And I'm sick of the DEI. The, the, the demand for racism far exceeds this supply. And if, if you treat someone different to be hired, that's racist. Don't treat anyone different, you know, nationally, the DEI is toast. And I would urge you guys to judge people by the content of the character instead of the color of their skin. Like somebody said in the 60s, you might know who he is. It's, it's very frustrating. I don't care what you look like. Are you a good person or you're not? Are you blocking the sidewalk or you're not? Are you shooting up meth or you're not? Are you creating a problem or are you not?
Thank you, Justin. Derek, and after Derek, we will have Will Hewings. And after Will, if she's in the building or online, Sunshine Wigan.
Derek Azaro, supporting District One. I talked to you last week at the town hall about the homeless parking and issues on Marietta Avenue and the issues with the principal. I'll give you an update on that. There's now more. There's more, there's more there. We have a Prop 1 that says no camping near a school or near a park. I would say at that location, there's a park and right across the street is a school. Both, either one of those stand true for that Prop 1. I realize the mayor's totally against this, you know? Two of our members stick up for it. The rest of you, I haven't heard one single support on it. I agree, you know, people do have to have somewhere to go. But the kids there are saying they're scared. That's the bottom line, right there. If this mayor cares about the children in this community, she shivered on the phone this week. We talked about it last week. It's been all week and the weekend and there's been no movement at all. Not one single thing is done. We went today, we went to the, a Vista Department about the inspection court going down the alleyway to the, to the van. We went to code enforcement upstairs, filed a complaint. You had this many days to even look into it and not one single word. So I guess the word, the, the bottom line is this mayor does not care about our children in our community at all. If she did, you can't tell me she didn't hear about what went on at that town hall. She had representatives there. She didn't go there because she wasn't invited. But other meetings, other town halls, other mayors have been there. This one's not there. Had she been there, she could have seen what's going on. But it still falls on your shoulders because you're approving all kinds of money, going out for everything. We have that on as a law. That's all there is to it. There is no argument, no discussion, no waivers, no nothing. The children at that school and every single school needs to be kept safe from this. Period. That's the law.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Will? And after Will, Sunshine.
Good evening again. My name is Will Hewings and I live downtown. I agree with them. Lisa Brown, she's pathetic. I live downtown and you guys know that I've been talking about this and it's just embarrassing with all these people here for the events and them out there cleaning up and they have all these bicycle cops walking around, they're talking about doing foot patrols. How about doing that all year? Not just for, you know, a week or whatever. It's embarrassing. Go to Kendall Yards, little Lisa's little fancy white neighborhood. It's pristine. You can eat off the sidewalk. You can't eat off the sidewalk downtown. You'll probably get overdose with fentanyl or whatever's on the sidewalk. Urine, feces, all this nasty stuff. And then walking out to come to this meeting tonight. I hadn't been out in like a, a day or two and I go outside and what do I see? All these poor helpless people. They have nowhere to go, so they hang out in front of my building doing drugs. And I do give the downtown precinct some credit because I heard they'd been out arresting people, which is fine, finally. I mean, what world do we live in where open drug use is just okay? And then we got our mayor using money from an opioid settlement to buy Narcan. And that's, and it's not, Narcan, they need to ban that. Maybe President Trump needs to ban Narcan. Maybe when more people start dying? Have you guys been paying attention to all the overdoses this weekend? It's eye-opening. If you read through the comments, it's, it's crazy. But you guys should be, you guys should really think.
Thank you, Will. Welcome, Sunshine. And after Sunshine, Raul Pena.
Sunshine Wigan, Spokane, homeless. I guess I kind of float everywhere, Medical Lake, Cheney, everywhere. I don't belong anywhere here because of your policies. But, um, so I'm here to talk about your domestic violence shelter, the, the church one you're building. So are we, are we making that just women or are men allowed there? And if so, are men with their kids allowed there? Because right now, we're in a position where we're sneaking men with their children into shelters when there's no beds and they're waiting until a bed opens because there's nowhere for these men to go. The other day, I tried to get a man help for domestic violence through the YWCA program and he said, they told him, the list is so long for the legal stuff, you'll be waiting forever. Not literally, but you know what I mean? So when you guys are building these little crappy shelters that you're building, will you please think about these men that have children that are leaving their wives because of domestic violence, beaten black and blue just like a woman? It's very frustrating that nobody is speaking up for them. And there is a lot more of them than you guys admit, like the statistics, not you guys literally, but the statistics. They say about, you know, 35% or something, but it's actually bigger than that. And a lot of them have come from rough living situations themselves prior or whatever. So they don't have the support that they need. And honestly, we're sneaking them into shelters because you guys haven't given us that. And these, it's just so unhumane, you guys making these church shelters. And you can roll your eyes, I don't care. So anyways, it's just very unhumane to see these elderly people nowhere to shower. Hey, what if you work? Are you going to sit around and wait through the 10 people for the shower when the shower does arrive from Jules Helping Hands? You don't have time for that. You have to find somewhere else to shower. I mean, like really think about how hard it is to work a full-time job and stay in those crap shelters that are unhumane.
Anyway, Raul Pena, District One. My main concern, you all know, safety. Not for me, not for my kids, but for the kids in my neighborhood. You know, 140,000 people are going to be downtown for, for the women's tournament. Police activity is triple, quadruple on the news. They're out like a rash on the babies, but yes, and I applaud the police for doing their due diligence. But these people, they're coming into my neighborhood. I called in. You know what I was told? Deal with it. Literally. I called in a concern and I was told, deal with it. Homeless individuals in my neighborhood and I'm being told, deal with it. Or that's low priority. Or the more you call, the less we're going to deal, and you know, deal with it, what you're talking about. These are the issues that really ticks me off because I got to watch my words. I got to be more politically inclined, inclusive. But the main thing is, I've asked you to come to my neighborhood. I've asked you and I pleaded politely, unpolitely. I signaled several of you guys out and still I get ignored, you too. Come to my neighborhood. See the chaos, the turmoil that the homeless are causing, you know? Kids don't need to see naked ladies running in the park going, ah!
Thank you, Raul, your time is up. That concludes our legislative agenda for this evening. I will entertain a motion for dismissal.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's, abstentions. This meeting is adjourned. Please join us next Monday night at 6:30.